Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. As we rise for the pledge of allegiance, I will ask you to remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. This Saturday, we lost Bill Primus, a council member from January 1 of 1980 to December 31, 1982, when he left Madison for a job opportunity in Washington DC. He returned to the area to take on the leadership of the Urban League of Morris County. He was also, not only did he serve the borough as an elected official, but was a longtime board member for the YMCA, the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts. And Bill, I think, there's many people in this room, and certainly through the urban side, one of the inspirations for where I see myself today as mayor. His dedication to our community, the way he served as a role model, the way, the service he did to the Urban League has truly made this world a better place. Services, well, the other thing I want to note is, the last time I did see Bill in this building was the day I was sworn in as mayor, and that's because, you know, even though he was no longer a community, I think we had so much respect for each other. The services will be this Saturday, January 17th, at 2:00 PM at the Church of the Redeemer at 36 South Street in Morristown, followed by repass at Calvary Baptist Church at 10 Martin Luther King Avenue. Also, this past weekend, we lost Brian Burns, Esquire. He was a former Planning Board Attorney for the Borough of Madison, special counsel to the Board of Education on the Green Village Road School Project. So, many of us in this room spent a lot of hours with Brian as he worked through this tremendous project. Brian started his law career working in the US Attorney's Office before starting his own practice in Florham Park, which he's had for 30 years. Visitation for Brian Burns will be this Friday, Leon Artis Memorial Home on 210 Ridgeville Avenue, Florham Park, from 3:00 to 5:00, and 7:00 to 9:00. A funeral service on Saturday, started at 9:00 AM at Leon Artis, followed by a mass for St. Matthew the Apostle Parish in Randolph at 10:30. So, please, a moment of silence in honor and memory of Bill Primus and Brian Burns. May I have a motion for the executive minutes of November 10th, November 24th, December 8th?
They're moved.
Second. These have already been discussed. Roll call of vote, please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. I have a motion for the regular minutes of November 10th, November 24th, December 8th, and the reorganization meeting of January 1, 2015.
They're moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call of vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. Welcome, and for those who missed our reorganization meeting, Happy New Year. And if we have all our ducks in a row tonight, I'll wager a buck, that, Buckeye, that I will have us home in time for the second half of Oregon. It's easy to get ducks in a line, but Buckeye is a little tough to work into a line. But anyway, I know some people may be home getting ready to watch the kickoff of that shortly. Shifting gears a little bit, I want to congratulate Ostry on her daughter Liz giving birth to Lena Elizabeth Keeter.
Thank you.
On January 9th. Congratulations, Grandma.
Thank you, everybody.
Library report. Madison Public Library is starting its winter programming schedule as of this week. This month, we will feature at Madison High School Book Arts and more throughout the library. It includes upcycled book crafts, blackout poetry, along with photography and other fine art by local, by our local teen talent. The opening reception is this Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00. Films for adults will be held on Wednesday afternoons rather than the evenings during the winter months. Other special programs coming up are the Pinterest troubleshooting this Friday at 2:00 PM, and Eating Green Vegetarian Organic Lifestyle this Wednesday at 7:00 PM. The Children's Services Department, very full schedule of storytimes and wide variety of programs are also under the way. And a note from the Adult Services Department, will not be able to offer the normal array of tax forms and instructions due to budget, government budgetary cutbacks. You've got to print it out on your own printer at home, but the library staff is ready to assist you on how to find those online. I want to recognize the, our Employee of the Month, Patrol Officer Sean McCarthy. And I did share the story when, back in December, but it's certainly worth repeating while he was recognized for this. Sean was off duty, and he assisted to a vehicle accident on Route 80 in Denville. He had seen a motor vehicle that night, an accident resulted in motor vehicle being disabled on Route 80 in the lane of traffic. Sean, seeing the accident, immediately took police action by removing the operator from the disabled vehicle and notifying the responding agencies. It was reported soon after that, as soon as he removed the operator from the vehicle, another vehicle then struck, struck the disabled vehicle. If it wasn't for Sean's quick actions by removing the motors from the vehicle, that person might have been injured or even killed. Sean certainly put his life ahead of others in saving this, this person. So, it was great that our finest are doing their finest outside of Madison. Couple anniversaries, we want to recognize Frank Picola, the Water and Light Building Department, his 35th anniversary on January 1. And Patrol Officer Lisa Esposito, the Police Department, 20th anniversary on January 5th. And let me come on down, we've got our microphone. We have, we have some ambulance corps members here in the audience, please come up and join me. And Bob, we have to get you to leave your seat too, because you wear a multiple hat. Don't be bashful. Volunteering means giving yourself without necessarily getting thanks, but we don't want you to be forgotten. Back in December, the Ambulance Corps had their annual dinner recognizing their volunteers. Regretfully, I was not able to attend, attend the event, but Carmelo Vitale attended it and was so moved by listening to the years of service that our volunteers have given to Madison, and felt that we should not just recognize them at a dinner, but making sure we recognize them in front of all of Madison. It is these people right here, and I'm sure a few others, that are given of their time to help those car accidents, whatever it might be, calls or cardiac issues. You are ready to help anyone in this town, and we greatly appreciate it. So, we have a proclamation and recognition of the volunteers serving the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps. Whereas, the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps was officially founded on July 15, 1954, originally operated out of Hartley Dodge Memorial Building. And whereas, the Corps built its own headquarters at 29 Prospect Street, which was dedicated on May 30, 1963, on land generously donated by Geraldine Dodge, constructed with building materials purchased with funds raised by the Corps through fundraising efforts, and built by all volunteer labor force. So, their beautiful building is a sign of volunteer work. Whereas, the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps has responded to over 50,000 calls, thanks to the service of many dedicated volunteers who generously, generously provided their time and expertise in attending to and caring for residents in need of emergency response. And whereas, the Corps still has a few original members serving today, namely Jack Lutz and Sally Barilick, remarkably having served over 50 years each. Whereas, members have devoted 30 to 40 years of service to the Corps are Pat Gaburo and John Do, and Corps members who have proudly served 20 to 30 years, Ed Smells, Jan Wolitski, Henry George, Shel Rockowitz, Kevin DiBiase, and James DeVico. And dedicated members with 10 to 20 years of service are Tim Blair, John Dorn, Elaine Cacavelli, Bob Landrigan, Carmelo Basalino, Carmelo Cook, Carol Livsey, William List, Mark Cacavelli, Robert Thistle, and John Hicks. And loyal members with five to 10 years of service are Dr. Kim Baldino, Tim Fawcett, Nancy Napolitano, Alice Dorn, Diane Fostigi, Michael Fostigi, Louis Gaburo, Anthony Napolitano, Rachel Gronveld. And many new volunteers have joined the Corps and are dutifully serving the residents of Madison, and I'll get a plug in, and you're ready to welcome many more volunteers that want to step forward. And not only do they give their time, but the, the hours of training they have to go through to do this is incredible. So, now, therefore I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby extend thanks and appreciation to the volunteers of Madison Volunteer Corps for their efforts, dedication, and commitment to the residents of the Borough of Madison. Thank you for all you do. And we can't thank you enough, so, if I delivered one of those a day, it still wouldn't be enough. Thank you. As an alert, we'll, we'll go not as listed on the agenda, but as we're sitting there. So, Community Affairs, Ms. Bailey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Madison Senior Center has two new activities this new year. Each Tuesday at 1:15 PM, Open Mahjong is meeting in the downstairs Activity Room. It is designed for those who have been taught the game but would like experience playing with other beginners. While these sessions are not formal instruction, they provide an opportunity to perfect the skills and strategies taught in local classes, and no registration is required. And they now also have a new fitness class to promote senior health. It's called Not Your Daughter's Yoga. It's being taught by Donna Sue Doughton, a certified senior fitness instructor from the Madison YMCA. The class is aimed at those concerned about complex routines done on a mat while seated on the floor. This yoga class uses both static poses and flowing movement to improve posture alignment, flexibility, and balance. All exercises are done standing or seated on a chair. And the series is held on Tuesdays, 11:30 to 12:30, beginning February 3rd. There is a cost of $45 for nine sessions. And then, the Chamber of Commerce has a new mobile version of its website, making it easier for people to discover Madison and its businesses via their portable devices. The Chamber will soon distribute and sell the 2015 edition of its Madison Loyalty Rewards Cards, which features discounts and special offers by Chamber member businesses. And the winner of the Merchant of the Month Award goes to Waverly TV, which was established in 1941, and they recently installed a beautiful new sign on the face of its premises. The Chamber Holiday Party is on Tuesday, January 13th, at Rocco's, starting at 6:00 PM. A mission is $25 for a hot buffet dinner. There will be raffles, and everyone is welcome to attend. And the Chamber, the Madison Downtown Development Commission, and the Rotary Club are in the midst of planning the 2015 Taste of Madison, and the date of that will be Monday, March 30th, at the Park Avenue Club. Tickets will go on sale in February. The Taste of Madison proceeds fund business development, civic improvements, and charitable causes in Madison. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Catalonello.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. 2014 was a very busy year for the Madison Fire Department. The department responded to 220 general alarms, 159 still alarms, 337 investigation, and 476 medical assists, for a total of 1,192 incidents. Twenty-one department drills were held, 473 fire prevention inspections were conducted, and 270 smoke carbon monoxide inspection detector for one- and two-family resales. For the senior citizens, Fire Department supplied, installed, and/or replaced 50 smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. The Fire Department also supplied and replaced approximately 175 batteries for our senior smoke and/or carbon monoxide detectors. In 2015, it's off to a roaring start, the Fire Department was dispatched to assist the Morristown Fire Department just on Saturday, the 10th. There was a structured fire in a single-family residence. Morristown Township Fire Department also responded. It was believed the space heater was responsible for the fire, so please, everyone, pay attention to your space heaters. For the police, the Madison Police Department responded to 2,530 calls for service during the month of December. During that month, officers investigated nine suspicious incidents, 27 suspicious motor vehicles, and seven suspicious persons. Madison officers also investigated seven acts of domestic violence, five thefts, five juvenile complaints, four property damage complaints, four frauds, four disputes, three identity thefts, three acts of harassment, three burglies, two missing persons, two fireworks in December, which is, yeah, and three ROR warrants. Madison officers made 13 arrests during the month for various offenses. Several of the officers received training during the month, and the Volunteer Ambulance Corps and Police Department responded to approximately 64 medical emergencies for the month in December 2014. And finally, Patrolman Ribka was accepted as a member of the Morris County Criminal Debriefing Team. Dispatcher Zaragoza was hired and completed training. The Madison Police Department PBA conducted its annual Toys for Tots program and collected over 14,000 toys to date since its inception. The Narcan program is up and running, and the Madison Officers PBA donated two brand-new bicycles to replace two stolen from Madison youths after Christmas. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. This is short report from the Water Department. Besides a lot of what the Water Department does, markouts and meter replacements, shut-offs, they, they continue with water sample analysis on a continuing basis. They just, they had to repair a service line at 16 Rose Avenue. There was a malfunction at the Madison Avenue tank that had to be taken care of. They also installed a new water service for new construction, and that was at the corner of Madison Avenue and Lewanica Way. And they filled the skating rink for winter, so maybe we'll get enough cold weather to freeze that water. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance, Borough Clerk, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, first of all, we'd like to salute the volunteers of the Utility Strategic Planning Committee, and make note that their committee chair, Martin Barbado, will present, will be presenting their report later in this meeting. The Audit Committee reviewed and is recommending the 2015 audit be done by Nissavatia. That's also on the agenda for tonight. The members of the 2015 Audit Committee are being reappointed this evening, thanks to Tom Bittenger, Art Powell, and Mike Soriano for their continued service. The Teamsters Union, which represents our DPW employees, ratified their contract offer, and when approved, will have all borough employees under contract through 12/31/17. The Capital Strategic Plan Committee will be presenting their report at the January 26 Council Meeting. And finally, a New Jersey Assembly Committee will be considering legislation this Thursday, which, if approved, will allow solar panels to be installed on the, at the MRC site. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Health, Mr. Walkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two things to announce from the Health Department, one being that flu shots are still available. As you may well have heard, this is a particularly bad flu season, and although it may seem late in the season, and you may also have heard that the vaccination that's been used this year is not quite on target for the type of influenza infections people are getting, it is nevertheless still advised, both by our Health Department and the CDC, to get an inoculation. It's one of these, a little bit of prevention is better than none. You can get them at the Health Department, please call for an appointment. The cost is $25 cash or a check made out to the Borough of Madison. In addition, pet licensing continues through the end of this month. All pets, dogs, and cats need to be licensed, including animals that never go outside. The penalty for not doing this prior to the 31st would be a late fee of $10. There is, of course, a fine if indeed one of your animals is found not to have been properly licensed. So, by all means, do it. If you have had your animal licensed in the past, you should have received a form to renew it. If you have not received that form, or if indeed you have a new animal, please go to Rosenet, and you can download the application there. Thank you.
Thank you. And Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, from the Engineering Department, the final invoices from the 2014 Road Improvement Program were received last week. If any residents affected by the recent municipal road construction work have any open issues that require our attention, please contact our Borough Engineer as soon as possible. Final payment is expected to be made within the next two weeks. Plans and specifications for the Ridgeville Ave Reconstruction Project are almost ready. The project has received a state grant, and we anticipate bidding it this spring for summer construction work. Next, the following, following the recent public meeting with the neighbors, a proposal has been received to survey the northern end of Central Ave to finalize a plan for road narrowing, sidewalk construction, signage, and striping improvements. Once surveying is complete, the proposal will be finalized and sent to Morris County for approval. The 2015 capital improvement budget proposals are being assembled. We expect them to be generally consistent with the rolling five and 20-year capital plans. The Waverly Green Parking Lot and specification are nearly complete. We, again, anticipate advertising this project in the spring and doing the work this summer. The Library's HVAC Ceiling and Lighting Repair Project, designed by EI Associates, had bids received last November. We rejected those bids as all were well over the estimates prepared by the consultant. The project will require a rebid this spring, once the consultant has modified the plans for construction. An additional appropriation request has been submitted and is on our agenda for tonight. And finally, from the scheduling meeting for the Complete Streets Committee is proposed to set the meeting schedule for the year. And from the Public Works, last Saturday was Christmas Tree Recycling Day at the Borough Garage. Approximately 600 trees were dropped off by our residents. We will also be picking up trees at the curb for the next two weeks. And just please note that the next Yard Waste Day is February 7th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Communication politicians.
Yes, Mayor. Council received two communications, an email dated January 8th from Diane Fostigi of Spring Garden Drive regarding the Madison Junior School Prom, and another email dated January 9th from Rudell Sergeant Franklin of Sherwood Avenue regarding the opening of the public schools on Reverend Martin Luther King Day.
Thank you. And now, we're on our first of two invitations for discussion from the public. This is the one with limitations. You may comment on any of the agenda discussion items or any resolutions. The agenda discussion items tonight include our Electric Utility Strategic Planning Report, the Proposed Inclusionary Development Ordinance, 2015 Council Bylaws, appropriation of $950,000 for Ridgeville Avenue, and appropriation of $200,000 for the additional work at the library. If anyone wishes to comment any of those items or any of the resolutions, please step up to Lecter and state your name, your address, and then the item you are commenting on, and keep your comments two, three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. And we move on to our first agenda discussion, which is the Streets of Planning Committee Report. Ben, you want to set that up?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're going to have the third of the four planned Strategic Planning Committee Reports, and this one is on utilities, both electric and water. I've said this before, and I'm glad to say it again, the amount of, and the amount of time, expertise, and effort that's gone into this by volunteers from our community is quite impressive, and I think the final output of this committee reflects that. I want to acknowledge the members of this committee. It's been chaired by former Councilman Martin Barbado, and he'll be making the presentation momentarily. Also, John Formica, former Mayor Gary Ruckelshaus, Carmela Vitale, and Herb Worthington have all been actively involved. And as well, the staff has provided excellent support, and I would have to point out that Jim Cody, I'm sorry, Jim Burnett, Ray Cody, Robert Califfutt, and Michael Piano and Robert Vogel have all been very much involved in helping this effort along. Having said that, let me say, by way of anticipation, that as with our other committee reports, there's only so much you can get done in a year. And indeed, what's, what Martin and his team has managed to accomplish in their year has been quite impressive. Nevertheless, that still leaves questions unanswered, agenda items to continue, and work to be done. So, I would say that what they've done very effectively is set the table for future work, and at the same time, reach the number of conclusions that will be extremely important to how we manage this electric utility operation going forward. I want to also add that the report, the presentation this evening will be available on the Rosenet website. The report itself, when finalized, will be compiled with the reports of the three other committees, and they will be packaged up as a single volume, which will be available for distribution to the public. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Martin Barbado.
Kind of odd to figure out where to direct myself, so I'll just kind of do both. Good evening and Happy New Year to all. Tonight's the presentation of the work by the Strategic Planning Committee on the utilities. Like the other utilities, and as Ben alluded to, we have been working since the beginning of 2014. The work was really interesting, and it made to do, honestly. And we trust it'll be found to be of value and of use by the Council. Table contents just gives you a little bit of an idea of where we're headed. Free here, this will be liability rates of surplus, that'll be kind of a recurring theme. And then, as Ben mentioned, there is only so much that we were able to do, foundational work that we needed to accomplish, and with that, we should be able to do some top of Pretty, took notice of the volunteers. We were very fortunate, people with backgrounds in the subject area, including former Mayor Gary Ruckelshaus and Herb Worthington, who's an industry expert, that was critical to the analysis on the outage history that we've experienced in Madison. I note that they're both here tonight, and so they'll keep me honest if I go off track. In addition, the work could not have been performed, no less completed, without the staff's support. Special note to Jim Burn, Jim Burnett, who was working through today, just to... So, this is an overview of our work. It begins with the question of the intended ends of owning a utility, you know? And so, we struggled with that as a starting point for planning, you know? Why do we have it? Why do we own it? Why would we continue to own it? As we know, New Jersey has 566 municipalities, only 10 of which own their own electric utility, and Madison's one of the 10. In addition, Madison owns... In addition, Madison owns its own water utility. However, without an answer to this question of the intended ends, it was not possible to move forward a discussion on planning. In addition to the basic concept of ownership, there's certain natural questions that follow closely behind. What is the level of service being provided to the residents? How does it compare with others? Is it worth the risk and cost of ownership? What is the cost of ownership, and how should that cost be shared? Madison does not currently have a way to systematically address these questions. In fact, as we discovered, Madison has been discussing these questions for quite some time. In 1984, the Madison Eagle published a series on the nearly 100-year history of the electric utility. History was rich with information on how the utility was started, how the purpose changed from generation to distribution of power, how the residents struggled with whether ownership continued to make sense, and how rates should be set, and what to do with any surplus. This history led the committee to the development of mission statements for the utilities. We'll get to these in the following slides. From the mission statements, the direction of the work became more apparent. The bulletin on reliability, rates, and surplus give you a preview of this direction. Finally, we'll get into some of the work that still needs to be done. Given what needed to be done, in the way of assembling information for use in planning, and the need to create decision-making tools that would be used in planning, the bulk of the work performed by the committee could be characterized best as enabling planning rather than actual planning. But with adoption and implementation of the work presented tonight, as set out in more detail in the committee's full report, the planning work left for the next phase can be effectively performed. Creating the mission statements, the committee analyzed the Madison Eagle history and identified the following themes or reoccurring issues. Independence. Rates as they related to the utility's purposes and costs. Rates as compared with Madison's neighbors. Generating a surplus. The use of that surplus in municipal operations. Rates versus taxes. Committee used this history to not only develop the proposed mission for the electric utility, but to guide it in its work. Here we have the proposed mission statement for the electric utility. There are three basic principles. Reading from the top, to provide the residents of Madison with the highest level of reliability. That's one of the first key words. In electric power attainable, and in no event less than the reliability available from any other major provider's electric power. What we're trying to do here is to set a stage again for what is the intended ends of the utility. Ties back to the history of the utility, which was the idea of independence. Not only as the electric utility, but also as to the water utility, is that independence was an important idea at the front of these utilities. Second one is to maintain rates that are comparable to those that would be payable to other providers' electric power. Now, again, when you go through this history, you'll see that this was a debatable thing. Should rates be market? Could they ever float above market? Would there be a justification for that? Should they be below market? And so what we had centered on was just to say, well, at the very least, they shouldn't be comparable. They shouldn't be out of whack with other alternatives. And the third one is where the circumstances are such that the resident taxpayers are benefited to generate surplus funds, which is charging rates that exceed the cost of operation. And then that would be used in municipal operations. Again, this was a highly debated issue, as we saw when we reviewed the history. But note that these words, and if you were to go back and look at the history and look at the report, you would see that these track closely to the issues. And so what we've taken is the history of the issues, put it into a mission statement, and tried to ring-fence it to a certain extent, and then use that for setting policy, proposed Water utility, which much is the same, same concepts. Reliability in distribution of water, the comparability of rates, and the generation of surplus. Now, considering the mission statements, you may want to bear mind the results of the survey conducted by Maureen Byrne. Further survey, a majority of residents think there is room for improvement in the decision-making process that's used by the governing body, that is not clear and open, and that communication is not such that decision-making is open in two ways. Committee's contention that adopting a mission statement will go a long way towards providing improvement in those concerns. Further, the mission statements should not be underestimated in their importance in providing direction in the operation of the utilities. Actually, the mission statements should be treated more as corporate charters for these two subsidiaries of Madison. And so to that end, of improved direction in operational decision-making for the utilities, and of improved transparency and understanding of the decision-making process by the residents, it's recommended that these mission statements be adopted by ordinance that they be used in decision-making. The first of a number of recommendations as we go through the presentation. Next, we'll delve deeper into how these mission statement principles become part of the operational decisions and planning. So with mission statement fulfillment, we have to look at reliability. What does it take to achieve reliability? Well, we concluded that we needed a well-maintained physical plant, at the very least. How do we know if we've achieved the highest level of reliability? Well, we need to understand our outage experience, and we need an appropriate way to measure and compare our experiences with that of other suppliers. How do we know that our rates are comparable? Of course, we need an approach for comparing rates, which we developed. How do we know if we're realizing an benefit from surplus? And we need an approach for calculating and analyzing this as well. Looking at reliability, we start with the capital assets. We prepared an inventory of the assets. This includes everything from the substations to poles to the individual transformers of poles. Installation date, expected useful life, and expected replacement date was determined. Also, estimated replacement costs were prepared. With this information, an estimate of spending for 2015 through 2017 was prepared. And before explaining the difference between the straight line and remaining useful life, I want to note that the three-year period of 2015-2017 was used throughout the committee's work. Given that the costs of purchase power were relatively certain for no more than three years, and that, given that, over the time, the estimates for capital investment were going to become less reliable, a three-year period was considered appropriate. To go longer would be less useful. Now, when we were trying to determine the estimated spending, which would be a combination of spending in the current year and setting money aside for futures purchases, we had to consider two approaches. The straight-line approach would be where you simply take the cost of an item, divide by a useful life, and that would be how much you would be setting aside every year during a useful life. And at the end of a useful life, you would have saved up enough to replace the item. But given that there are many items that are not at the beginning of their useful life, you have a difficulty. They have remaining useful life on them. And we're going to be facing a cost to replace them sooner than we would be able to save to put aside for the replacement date. So what we did was, is that we first did a baseline, which was a straight-line approach, and then we calculated based on remaining useful life, determined what it would take, starting in 2015, to set aside in order to what I'll call catch-up. Now eventually, if we did do that, we would get to the point where we would be able to follow straight lines, so long as we were saving on a regular basis for each replacement. Now, I want to note that the difference is significant between the two. And it's not that we're recommending immediately going to remaining useful life, but I think, as I point out here, the difference between the two should be seen as a measure of how behind we are in setting money aside for future asset replacements. And so you'll have a spectrum, if you will, of spend. It could be at the straight-line level, it could be at the remaining useful life level. And to the extent that we can put together a plan that moves us towards remaining useful life in order to get us eventually to straight line, that's more of the recommendation. Now, just two quick notes here. Spending is directly related to reliability. It seems axiomatic to say it, but it nevertheless seemed, you know, important to say. To the extent that we don't make decisions best in the assets, then we're directly impacting reliability, and that would be inconsistent with the committee. Congress is also true. Yes?
Martin, so if I pay attention to this, it seems as though you are, the committee is advocating putting money aside, so, as opposed to some sort of borrowing in the future. So that was your mindset?
Yes.
That this is going to be done with the aim of reducing future borrowing?
Well...
When it all went possible?
Not even to contemplate borrowing.
Not contemplate borrowing?
As the utility is generating funds, it would be those funds in part for current investment spending and certain set-asides for future spending.
Thank you.
Now, more work would need to be done in order to determine how to close this gap, more than we were able to do at this time. But again, I think the way to look at it is to think of it as a spectrum. The goal would be that, over time, we would get to the straight-line approach. That would be the ideal state, and annually, we'd be setting aside what we need for the replacement date. So with that as a warning, we'll take a look at this slide. So for electric, we can see that the average annual spend, a straight-line approach, would be something just north of $400,000 a year. But if we wanted to catch up in 2005, 2015, we'd be talking about spending $1,006,000. Now, as we replace assets, that number steps down. And eventually, it would, of straight line, if we followed it all the way through.
And how many years would that take roughly? Do you think?
In the report, it's long. I would tell you long. It could be 30 years.
30 years of spending at $3 million a year for water?
No, no. It would be stepping down. So this is your high point. So, for instance, we have assets that are included in that number that are to be replaced. If we replace them based on their useful life in 2015...
Understand.
Once we replace them, that number steps down.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay? Yes?
I'm assuming a lot of that is for some very big...
There is some big items in, yes.
I'm sorry. I see some items as being kind of capital items that need to get replaced on a regular basis, like the roads. On the other hand, a large item like a water tank, I don't think it's, in my opinion, something you want to ask taxpayers today to set the money aside for the next 20 years, 30 years, whatever it's going to take before that water tank needs to be replaced, and then have the money ready to pay for it. I think we would be better, if we had a large ticket item like that, to, if we had to borrow the money at that point, and then amortize it over the next 20 or 30 or 50 years for the people who actually got the useful life out of it.
That could very well be, and I have two responses to that, Pat. One, we didn't get into financing. What we're trying to do is to make up for the fact, if you will, that we didn't have structures to look at these. And so if there's any large takeaway that comes from the committee's efforts, it's going to be that the council sees value in the structures, in the way that it behaves, how it sets up its databases, how it makes decisions. Then from there, there's a lot of value added that can go on.
And that part I appreciate, and I think it's going to be a challenge for us to decide. Well, it'd be very difficult upon 3.2 million, but how do we pick between the two? And I think that's one of the things that went into my thinking when I looked at that.
But as I said before, it's not a matter of picking between the two. This is just to give a benchmark, that's all it is. Now, the other thing I wanted to say is this, is that in developing these numbers, there were sub-appaches to developing the useful life. Accounting approach, or you can use more of a plant sets approach. So what we did, we collected both. We used, for instance, we had Michael Piano, who was helping us on each of the assets. He gave his judgment based on, in the field, of when items should be replaced. What we got from Bob Vogel was the accounting approach of what would be the classification of the useful life. So we would compare those two for each asset, and we picked the most conservative one, which would have been the one that raised the number the highest. Okay? Now, it could be that that's not really the best thing to do. It may be that, for certain assets, we're really better off deferding to what Michael was determining. Really didn't, there was so much to assemble and do, we really couldn't go the next step and decide what's the better between the two. This, again, this is a way to think about what we're doing. Ties back to the first principle of mission of reliability. Assets need to be, to the extent that we do it, maximize reliability. To the extent that we don't, we will not maximize reliability. Now, this is one of the most fun pieces of this project. The utility, electric utility, has been keeping a log of outages. Certain information, and they'd have the date, when it went out, how long it was, where it was, what circuit was involved, what was the potential cause. And so what we did was, we took that information and created a database from it, which allowed us to analyze it, and then draw conclusions from it, and make suggestions from it as well. So you could see that the history ran from 2002 through 2014. It's a pretty rich, very, very useful. We then, using Herb's expertise, were able to categorize the outages by causes. Now, this was a little difficult because not only, not the language was the same throughout, which is, I believe, one of the things that we would recommend, is not only that the database continue to be made in a chronic fashion, but nomenclature be adopted that's uniform. And so we know in an infrastructure, what it means to say that an infrastructure failure was a result of outage versus a weather-related item like a lightning, though for a fact. All right? I would say that the database, and Herb may, I don't know what you feel, but maybe 70%, 80% clean on the categorization, where we can actually see, well, this goes into that bucket, and goes into this one, that bucket. Now, then, from there, what we were able to do is calculate the average customer hours per outage. And then from there, we could do averages by cause. And so we really start to get a sense of where is the biggest hurt, if you will, to the residents from different types of outages. You know, just anecdotally, people often say, we actually scroll rocks. Well, it's true. And the number of events are high with scrolls. But two things. First off, that trend has trended down. And number two, the outage length is much shorter than others. So when you look at it on an average basis, they're not really that bad. There's other things that are more challenging than scrolls. But this gave us the opportunity to look at that. As I note here, we established nomenclature for outage information, and we, and then the next thing we had to do is, and I mentioned this earlier, is that once we have this, how do we know how we're doing? We needed to have something against which we can measure our outage experience versus So the committee selected SADI, reliable measure, industry reliability measure. This acronym stands for System Average Interruption Duration Index. And it's calculated by taking the total sum of customer minutes of interruption for a year and dividing it by the total number of customers served in that year. Now, for Madison, this calculated out as follows. We have the outage period analyzed was for, it was about 11 and 1/2 years, actually. The number of outages that actually had time loss without power were 228 for the period. The average annual customer minutes of interruption was a total 588,000 over that period of time. Number of customers are 6,400, and so Madison SADI is 91 minutes. 90 minutes. So about an hour and a half is the average outage over that period of time per year. So that's interesting, but it doesn't tell us anything yet. So that's interesting, but it doesn't tell us anything yet until we compare it with So we compared it with a few different benchmarks, and certainly there are others, and we could, that could be further work to look at, because with the comparisons, we could start to set goals for this. So as you can see here, just from this comparison, Madison compares very favorably. The top one, Sussex Rural 2013 Score, that is for the Sussex Rural... It's a co-op, right? A co-op of several utilities? And so their goal is 120 minutes, but they're not really meeting that. They're about three hours on average during their period of time. The next two were by the Institute of Electrical Electronics Engineers. It's an organization that conducts an annual survey of electrical, electric utilities. And Madison would be within this group here. Now, we didn't participate in the survey, but if we did, or we wanted to benchmark ourselves against a group, it would be this group. So we compare quite favorably to that group. So stopping here for a second, if we take the scheduled assets and the outage analysis together, the committee identified an approach on supporting reliability through regular capital investment, to measuring reliability, and to compare with other providers. Does not mean that there aren't other approaches that could be identified, but given Madison has none right now, what the committee identified appears to be a good starting point. And so again, the committee therefore recommends that we consider adopting an ordinance that covers at least the first schedule of assets, which would be implemented and regularly maintained, and of course, we have to have the conversation about what do we do to close the gap on spending? And that's to determine the investment approach. That should say actually some variation on those two. Number two, the outage database and analysis approach that we took for analyzing our history. That really should be maintained. Maintain electronically with common nomenclature that can keep the information up so that we can understand by cause and by circuit. And the final thing is to adopt SADI as the measure. Now, again, we're recommending this one because we identified it. It's very simple to use, simple for people to understand. And as we flow into here, going back to the idea of trying to give more transparency and understanding to the residents, this is an easy way to give it to them, is to create a Rosinet access to SADI and the outage tracking, so they can see for themselves, how are we doing and how are we comparing to others? We would suggest that, as we said, for the period of time 2015 to 2017, we would suggest that you monitor the performance from the recommendations and adjust as necessary for subsequent years. Now, we started doing some work here, but there's a lot to do here, is to look at causes by circuit. You can actually see different circuits in town where causes, for some odd reason, are more impactful in that circuit. That particular circuit has more difficulties with infrastructure. Now, that may be a reason to go out there and look at transformers in that particular area, to see why it is that they have more incidents of outage, or the duration of the outage is longer. But it allows you to do this proactive planning and proactive investment with that kind of information. And then for the water utility, the most that we could say is that we haven't had any significant outages for a long, long time. But we may want to do something more than that to determine a way to measure reliability of the water utility. All right, now we go to rates. Now, as noted, the committee reviewed the rate schedules for the nine other municipal-owned utilities, and we looked at four major investor-owned utilities. Now, what I had seen done before is just the comparison of rate schedules, and no one could do anything with that. No way that we could possibly tell if our rates were different, or too high, or too low, or just right for the residents by just handing out different rate schedules for these different utilities. What we did was, we determined the average consumption for 2013 in Madison, monthly consumption, and then applied the rate schedules to that consumption, and then came up with an annual spend by an average resident under that different rate schedule, and then compared the rate schedules to see how the spending level would change under different rate schedules. Now, before I give you the results of that, or some of the results of that, I just want to note two things. First off, not all MOUs generate surplus for use in municipal operations. This was a big divide. You have 10 municipal-owned utilities, and it's approximately half and half, where half do not generate surplus. And so you would understand that their rates would be substantially less. They are. They're substantially less. But you'll see that when we compare more apple to apple, we're not really that out of whack. The other thing to consider is that we needed to consider for known reliability differences. JCPN L, as one of the four major investor-owned utilities, is also significantly less than its comparable utilities or providers. But its reliability is also less. And so the idea of looking at reliability rates together, we really want to try to reinforce Now, there's more detail on this in the report, but I just pulled out a couple to do a comparison. So at the bottom, this would be under Madison's current rate schedule, and the average consumption per month, the average resident would spend about $2 million on electric.
Two thousand.
Two thousand. Sorry.
Got everyone's attention on that one.
This is pretty good. People really wait. They're paying attention. So now, let's, these are the two different MOU indices, I'll call them. You have the average of the MOUs without Madison, oh, excuse me. That's not correct. The average of the MOUs without Madison, this is just all nine, and not differentiated between the ones that transfer surplus or the ones that don't. And you can see that we are about 20% higher than that average spend. But when I just look at the MOUs that are similar to us in that they generate surplus as an alternate source for funding municipal finances, and they transfer surplus, you see that we compare here below them. Then I thought it'd be interesting to see how we compare to the investor-owned utilities. Now, you can see, again, we're above them. This one includes JCPN L. If I pull out JCPN L here, and on the idea that they have reliability that's more in line of what we would want in the way of reliability, then the gap gets closed. We're still, we're still above them.
Martin?
Yes?
So one would assume that the reliability of the MOU that doesn't generate surplus would be lower than the reliability than those that do, or how did you, how did you look at that?
So it's a great question, and I want to expand it as a disclaimer, if you will.
And then I have a follow-on, so please answer that one.
Okay, I'll come back to it. The disclaimer is this, and it goes back to the way I worded it on the previous slide. Only to the extent that we knew reliability information about other utilities that we factored. We do not know the SADI, for instance, on all 10 MOUs. Now, we talked about next steps could be to approach them, to see if we can encourage them to do the same type of tracking, and then we could compare. But today, I could not tell you that the reliability is comparable. All I knew was that JCPN L was not comparable, and so we pulled them out of the analysis. Okay? The other point is this, is that, no, I don't think that that would be a proper conclusion. The fact that they don't generate surplus is not something that correlates with lower reliability.
With reliability.
All it means is that what they're not doing is charging above cost.
And then for the average projected customer spend in Madison, how did you account for Gerolda Farms and Drew?
Just residential.
This is just a straight, and it's an apples-to-apples comparison, I'm assuming, residential for the MOUs?
Yes. Now, the water utility is interesting in reverse. Madison is significantly below the average of other municipal-owned utilities, pulling Madison out of the average, and the average of IOUs that supply water throughout the So a summary of the high-level findings of the rate analysis would appear to be that Madison electric rates are comparable with MOUs that generate surplus and less comparable with the IOUs, when we exclude JCPN L, and the Madison water rates are substantially under comparable suppliers. But it's important to make clear that this is not an opinion on the appropriateness of the level of the rates. It simply results in approach to comparing rates. Acquired and interdependent, independent assessment of the mission principles would undermine the more important question to be answered on a regular basis. And so to conclude anything from the rate comparison by itself without looking at reliability would not be a thoughtful exercise. As a primary recommendation is to adopt approaches to assess compliance with the missions, it's recommended that annually, that the council use SADI in the rates analysis to determine whether the mission is being met and whether any changes are warranted. Now, looking back, historically speaking, we could appine that the electric utility combination is consistent with its mission, or it appears to be consistent with the mission, but the water utility may not. That make sense?
What you're saying, Jim, the question is, is 8.9% variance from the MOUs comparable? I mean, I think that's something the council's going to have to decide. Is that close enough to be in the ballpark, or, you know, should we be closer if that's what we're trying to achieve?
So I would respectfully rephrase that question. Oh, I, that would be, if that was done just by itself, Pat, that to me would be a stovepipe analysis, and it's exactly the type of thing I'm suggesting that we should not do. Were to say to me that what the council needs to look at is whether the rates currently in Madison is tied to reliability as a package comparable to the rate and reliability bundle offered by the IOUs, that would be the type of comparison we're trying to motivate to take place.
The rate structure right now, if it was to be changed to be completely comparable, you know, completely equal, I don't think the first thing that would go would be reliability. The first thing that would go would be the amount of the transfer. I mean, there's a lot of money that we're moving, so I don't think we necessarily have to jeopardize reliability. But on the other hand, if we're going to make comparable rates part of our mission statement, then we have to sort of decide what does comparable mean? How great a variance from, you know, equality is still within what you want to consider comparable?
And just so we kind of stay on track here, we are going through all these presentations, and obviously, there's going to be next steps, and we haven't even talked about the next steps for the first two presentations. So we'll have to digest all this, so we don't want to spend a whole lot of time debating what the rate structure should be. That will be a next step. We will be.
Yeah, I mean, just to follow on that, and was a comment I was going to make, is that the tie-in between this work and what's gone on in the budget, the committee on the budget, and as well the committee on capital, I think will become clear once we've had all three and we're able to integrate them. But what I took out of this was that what it really, it gets down to what you said, the combination of rates and reliability, but it also gets down to why do you have the utility to begin with? Because if, you know, depending on how you answer that, there'd be between charging way too much and charging more or less what the market seems to bear. So the decision becomes to me, anyway, one of why do you bother?
Yep. Which I anticipate a spirited discussion in the future on the mission statement.
I will, this is my last question on electric, but is there any way we can get the SADIs for the other MOUs, given that we believe that the, you know, the rate structure doesn't, for the other MOUs, doesn't necessarily imply anything about the reliability of the system? I think it would be useful if we could get our hands on the SADIs for those when we, when we talk about this, ex post this, your conclusion.
I agree. In doing that, we not complete that exercise, and what we know so far is that they're not all doing it. That are doing it or may be doing it, but there may be an educational process where we're leading them to say, if you do this, this is helpful for you as well as for us. Like, we saw the one with the Sussex Co-op. They're obviously doing it.
Right. I just, I just think, I'd just love to see that data.
Oh, yeah. No, I agree.
I think it'd be useful.
Now, we turn to surplus. Now, surplus, as we know, occurs when rates generate revenue that exceeds the cost to operate the utility. As the mission directs, the surplus should be generated where the resident taxpayers are benefited. As we know, the surplus is used in municipal finances. In order to see the net benefit of doing so, a more interrelated analysis with municipal finances is required. Therefore, the committee's work was limited to just the calculation of projected surpluses. Part of our next phase work, we would suggest, stated analysis. Now, the projections were calculated, assuming the different approaches to capital investment of straight-line and remaining useful life, and assuming the different rate schedules. As noted on the slide, a base scenario was prepared, which are our control number, and that used the current rate schedules, no change in consumption, operating costs based upon historical spending in the straight-line capital funding approach. Then we, then we put together the other scenarios. Now, I don't present all the other scenarios here, but they're all in the folder. Now, surplus, and as I note, at the bottom, surplus calculations would be needed to perform the net benefit analysis, but was also needed for municipal finance analysis. The point here is this, is that for the utility purposes, we would have liked to have done a net benefit analysis and explained what we need in order to do that. But we did have an eye on the municipal finance committee's needs. They needed projected numbers. So at a minimum, we had to do projections. And so we figured we'd do the projections under the different scenarios, and then you can draw your decisions and your conclusions from there. Just to continue that, the net benefit can only be determined in conjunction with the property tax analysis. Project surplus is going to be understood a value lighter than the need for surplus in municipal finances. And I looked again tonight at the municipal finance report. It doesn't quite do pro formas, but I did see projections that would allow for the generation of pro formas, so that we could take the one and compare it to the other and see if the projection of the surplus matching to what is the projected need under the municipal finance committee's work. So just a little bit of comparison here. So we have, at the bottom here, this is the 2014 transfer of 6.2 million. The base scenario would generate 7 million in 2015, and then would adjust as you see for 2016, 2017. Just to have one what-if comparison, if we did take, and it's interesting that you called this one out, Pat, if we took the average of the IOU rates without JCPN L, which would be an 8.9% reduction, I think it was, that would be a resulting surplus. And so assuming for the moment that the 2014 transfer was indicative of what was needed in 2015 to 2017, right away, that there would be a gap.
Did you apply the base with the average of IOU rates to residential and commercial, or just residential?
No, this is entirely residential. Wait a minute, wait a minute. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Ask that question again.
Sure. In, when you did your, you have the base case, okay?
Yeah.
So if we look at the base, but with average of IOU rates without JCPN L, was that applied to all electric utility, Madison electric utility customers? to all electric, Madison electric utility customers, or just the residential customers?
So, I see Jim shaking his head, yes, all, but is that really what Robert did? What did he do? Isn't there, isn't there a different rate schedule or some change in the rate schedule for commercial?
He just dropped election by 8.1%.
Is it possible to do the analysis, just to tweak the analysis, Jim, to just reflect the base for residential customers only, leaving commercial customers the same?
And that's one of the things we can do is, obviously, as this goes forward, is make a list of these sort of questions you need to...
Sure, okay, yeah, sure. All right, thank you.
So, I, in the formal presentation, when I look at the proposed next phase work, has been, some of this has already been alluded to earlier, under surplus generation, we really need a methodology to assess the surplus as a net benefit over less tax revenues. Don't have a way to do that today, we don't do it today like we do inside of it. We need to implement a standard approach to evaluating rate changes in light of the impact on municipal finances. Again, really great work for the committees to work together on and develop as a proposal on that. Surplus with regard to use of municipal operations. Now, what I've suggested here is a target for the amount of surplus to be generated from municipal operating expenses purposes only. Now, this is slightly different than what Tom did with his committee. Tom had, and Tom, you can correct me if I understand it, had essentially determined that approximately, I think it was 17% of spending would be, have to be funded by surplus, and that's capital, debt, and operations. And operations was something more in the 7% to 9% range. Does that sound right, Tom? Something about there? Yeah, 17, but that was for everything, the capital and debt, but the operations was a lower amount.
Was less.
Less than that. And I had taken the budget and briefs of 1999 and done an analysis of this well, and aligned operations, municipal operations spending with municipal revenues, and it dovetails with what Tom came out. It's like 10% at most. But what I'm trying to suggest here is that there's not only value to what Tom's suggesting is that we should be looking for that, but municipal finance shouldn't be looking for more than that. It should be seen as a red flag. If it starts to look for more than that to fund municipal operations, then we have a problem. We have a growing reliance on a variable revenue to fund expenses which are largely fixed, unless we're gonna do things that are very drastic. And so what we would want to have is a target on the amount of municipal spending for operations that would be funded by surplus. And the balance, we would want to prioritize the capital spending. All right, and this was based on an analysis of that history.
Martin?
Yeah.
Very quickly, if you were to do what you just said, which is fine, I mean, we're going through all the possible hypotheticals, then it would seem to me that you're changing the proportion, right, you have to be, between what you're collecting via tax revenue and what you're collecting via surplus, right? I mean, to the extent we looked at that, Tom and his group looked at how funding has gone on in the county, we're an outlier, right, in the sense that we rely on property taxes for 49%, and we rely on our utility surplus for the remaining 17 to get us to the county average of 66. So if we reduce the surplus number in electric, then it says that either you shrink government or you have to find another source of revenue.
So, then I miscommunicated because I'm not suggesting reduction. What I'm doing is taking what Tom has proposed and putting a boss on it. So he has said 17%. I'm not saying to change the 17%. What I wanted to do was to say, let's look at the 17% separately, which Tom does to a certain extent, roughly 10%, roughly 7%, debt, operations. What I'm saying is that there's an additional value, same with the operations, that having the target or to use the 10% not just as something that municipal finance looks for from the utility, but in planning, that it's considered a floor and a ceiling, if you will.
Understood.
Okay? Excellent. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, that, let's see if I had something else here. Prioritize the use of remaining surplus. Capital, developer approach to determining the amount of surplus to be transferred, acting working capital needs. What this is about, and it was just the beginning of an analysis that I was doing with Robert, is that, and this is entirely an opinion embedded, and I would respectfully suggest that there's value in doing this. The amount that is currently retained in the utility, not transferred, seems to be in excess of what's needed for working capital. If that were true, then naturally more could be transferred. That's a worthy analogy. This one we talked about already.
Get back to the rate.
This one is actually underway to a certain extent. I think Ben and Jim have been working on this for a while, working on procurement guidelines, and we just support it. So, just some quick final remarks. The recommendations by the utilities committee have the potential to not only elevate the decision-making concerning the utilities, but the discussion that takes place about the utilities, both by the governing body and between the governing body and the residents. Rates, reliability, and surplus can and should be discussed collectively and in an objective manner. Also, the recommendation by the utilities committee should be considered, together with the municipal finance committee and the capital committee, for a decision in one will impact another, obviously. Finally, these three committees should be asked to work together to develop interrelated recommendations. Thank you for your time and attention, and if there's any other questions, happy to hear them.
Great work, and for you and the whole committee.
Very thorough.
Any other questions otherwise? We'll hear our last committee in two weeks, and then kind of we'll talk about our next steps, and as Ben mentioned, there's a lot of overlap that we have to sort through, too. So, an example of great work. Carmel?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of remarks because I didn't make every single one of your meetings, but when I was there, it was extremely interesting. This is probably, I think, one of the most difficult things to figure out are these utilities. There's so many different aspects of it. And what I found, right from the beginning, is I think the first word that we used in this committee was reliability. And that's where this whole entire thing stemmed from, is to make sure that our customers were well taken care of. And, you know, this is my second year, going into my second year as liaison to utilities, and one of the things that I found out was that there's a lot that we get from this electric utility besides surplus for operations in our capital. We did six roads last year, you know, from use of that surplus. But I think that there's a lot of financial benefits that come to the borough that we don't really even, even think about. And, you know, it was a great exercise for me because it makes you think about what exactly, it's just not turning a light switch on in this town. It's very involved. But I think we should note that a portion of the engineering, the administration, the finance salaries are covered by the utilities. They install and maintain 15,000 streetlights in this town. They do tree trimming. That comes out of their budget. All the ball fields, lighting maintenance is taken care of. They maintain all the town traffic signals. They do all the municipal electric repairs. The engineering and design of the infrastructure and the design and engineering for the transformers that were recently installed in Nord Street, pump station was done by them. They put up the Christmas tree and the decorations throughout the town. And the borough pays full price for their municipal electric, and the surplus, which is profit that is generated on those municipal sales, comes right back to the borough. And also, it actually generates its own funding for capital improvements to the electric infrastructure without the need of tax dollars. So if you add up all of those financial benefits in talking with Mike Piano and whatever, they're in excess of about $750,000 a year. So I think it kind of says a lot about the electric utility. We sometimes forget about the water utility, which is extremely important. And we have a new committee, the Share Utility Advisory Committee, that's gonna really talk about water utility and what the needs are. But I wanted to say thank you to you. It was a lot of work, a lot of effort, and, you know, thanks, Gary and Herb. God bless you, doing all of those charts. I don't know how he does it. Yeah, it was just extraordinary. And Jim and Ray, of course, have been extraordinary help, so we appreciate all your work. Thank you.
A pleasure.
All right, we'll get back to our council seats. Thanks again, Martin, for your excellent work. And we'll get on to inclusionary development ordinance. Ostry, we'll let everyone sit down first.
Great job, Martin. Okay. We're proposing an inclusionary development ordinance. The Council on Affordable Housing will eventually have regulations saying what our contribution needs to be for low and moderate income housing. So with that in mind, we've just tweaked our current inclusionary development ordinance to replace certain sections of the existing ordinance in the chapter 195 of the Madison Code entitled the Land Development Ordinance that speak in terms of affordable housing growth requirements. So we're requiring a 10% minimum inclusionary development for all residential projects with 10 or more units, and a payment in lieu for any partial units consistent with the regulations of the New Jersey Council on Affordable Housing. So there are pockets in town that could be developed with housing of 10 units or more, and we want to make sure that out of that, 10% would be set aside for affordable housing because we have to, one way or the other, meet our obligations to COA. And right now, we are a little under, even by current standards, so we need to have this available. Any questions?
Rob?
So, the developer would then be responsible for delivering the unit itself as opposed to just the cash?
Correct.
Would that, would that make Madison a less desirable place to develop?
I don't think so. You know, Madison's always been on the forefront of scattered site housing. Way back when we started our program on affordable housing, we said that we wanted there to be a mix of housing throughout the town, not just pockets of low and moderate income housing. So I think this makes sense. Also, the problem is if we just get cash, where are we gonna, where are we going to find places to put it, of the housing? This poses a problem to get the number that we need and land.
So, if it is cash, we have to get the land and build, as opposed to inclusionary, it is built, and we don't have to worry about the land.
Did that not come out right?
I just wanted to reinforce that, yeah.
It used to be, many years ago, you could do what was known as RCAs, where you could sell your affordable housing to other areas. Most of that's been curtailed.
Yep.
So they want you to build it in your community then.
Yep. Bob and then Ben?
Yeah, I understood what Rob was saying, and, you know, that's something that's, you know, different discussions have come up. But I understand the whole concept of scattered, because what that does do is it avoids areas of only low and moderate income housing. By scattering it throughout town, it's less intrusive, or however you want to word it.
No, it's inclusionary.
It's inclusionary, right, right. And, but with your experience, are developers, to Rob's point, do you think they'll be less reluctant to build here?
No, I don't, I don't think we're gonna have a problem because there could be so few sites that even qualify for this.
Ben?
Thank you. I was just curious as to where these units have to be cited. In other words, if a developer comes in, multi-unit project, are we saying they have to set aside a certain number of those units in that entity?
Correct.
Or are we saying you have to build that number somewhere in town?
No, as part of the project.
There has to be in that entity.
Correct. We're just so, you know, we're so limited in where we can do this.
Rob?
If we pass this, will GVR be affected?
No.
Nope. Because we already have a developer's agreement.
Yeah, their development agreement's already in lieu of...
And this only applies to 10 or more units that are being built at a time at a site, okay?
Right, so there are very, there are very few opportunities when you think about it. I mean, we have a committee on the planning board that has been looking at different scenarios with regard to this. There are very few places that this could actually take place.
Okay, any other questions or comments? The ordinance one is listed for introduction tonight. Council bylaws, a year in the making here. So, we will, we have the resolution listed. I don't think we need to go through it like we did last time, but are there any questions or concerns about, is there, did we capture everything that needed to be? All right?
I think we have. I had requested in my last email that if anybody had any questions or suggestions, but John Napolitano had set up a resolution for us that we took off on January 1 because there were some questions, and I think that this probably takes care of it all at this point. I hope so. This is a year, this has been going on, and the changes are not that dramatic, so greatly appreciated if we could do it.
I think it's fine. I had raised some of the questions only because we were getting inundated with paper, and none of it was really reflective of what we wanted the bylaws to be, and also they didn't show what the old, what we were replacing. We finally got a copy in Friday's packet that actually shows us what was there, what's going to be there, and it was a lot clearer at that point rather than try to refer to two pieces of paper. So, and I think you're right, the changes are not extremely significant, and everything we've previously discussed and kind of agreed to.
Okay, anything else? So that's Resolution 39, the consent agenda. Right, item four, appropriating $950,000 general capital improvement fund for the reconstruction of Ridgeville Avenue. We got Bob Vogel?
Evening, everyone. I'll be relatively brief. I see the football game like the rest of it, hopefully. The end of it, anyway. Yeah, so the Ridgeville Avenue reconstruction projects, but on the schedule, capital five-year schedule for quite some time, it's obviously an integral part of the 20-year road reconstruction program. We went through and did two rounds of water main replacements, so we did the entire length of Ridgeville Avenue in terms of water main replacements in one year, two years ago. And now that that utility work is cleaned up and some development work along Ridgeville Avenue is also cleaned up, the road conditions are as bad as any road in town, and we really need to make that priority number one. So, this is an appropriation request, again, in advance of the budget, but I will say, consistent with the five-year and 20-year plans, to get that project rolling, we do have one round of state funding for $200,000, which has come in as a guaranteed participation from the state, which is also helpful. And it's possible that the state comes through with an additional amount before the April bid date. It's my hope that that happens. However, given past practice, they may skip a year on us as well, and so we'll see how that turns. And so we'll see how that turns out. Mr. Burnett just asked me to hand out last year's five-year capital projection to you all so you could see how Ridge Dale Avenue will be handled in the current year capital budget. And the reason for that is, in order to get both phases of Ridge Dale Avenue done this year, what we need to do is take the five-year capital budget and take what was originally slated, which was the south end of Ridge Dale Avenue in 2016, and advance that to 2015, while simultaneously taking several of the smaller roads that are of a lower priority in 2015 and advancing those to 2016. It's a very simple swap and it's best you see it through the PowerPoint presentation that we put on last January, just to make it very simple. So let me pass that out for one second. Any questions?
Rob?
Is the 950 inclusive or exclusive of the state aid?
Exclusive.
So we always fully fund and then the money comes back.
I thought that, wasn't the funding already secured for this?
You don't get the money until you do the project.
Yeah, we have to pay it upfront in every bid. But we do have that, we do have that money from the state.
The $200,000, it's an application response, but we've always managed to get the money after a year's time from the state. Sometimes a little bit more than a year.
And again, this, we are typically, we discuss the capital projects for the year as part of the process, but we know we're committed to doing Ridge Dale and we want to get this out there.
Want to do it early, yeah.
Yep. And this is a large enough project that it really doesn't need to be combined with other road projects as we did this past year.
Pat?
So right now, you're showing a total of the year for $1,090,000. But you're also showing, the two Ridge Dales on here is half a million each. I think you're asking for 950. So that's an additional 50 we'd have. And I thought we did Wilson last year.
Wilson was done last year, so that isn't updated in that schedule correctly. Wilson was actually completed in 2014, so it should be a flat million, Pat.
Okay, thank you.
For 2015. Obviously, there's a Millan overlay project that's coming to you as well. So that may comprise another quarter million dollars or more.
Oh, sorry.
Yes?
One other question. Since the road kind of impacts both Central Ave and the high school, do we feel we're going to be able to get the work done, a substantial amount of the work done during the months where school's not in session?
It's always my hope to get it all done, all the work done during the summer.
Okay.
Having the budget and the appropriation approved this early in the season really puts us in the best possible circumstance to see that happen. So, yes.
So I see Lisa in the audience. So we'll start the first week of September, is that, no, I'm sorry.
So then my other question is, do we have to do anything in terms of a capital budget to enable this money or is just?
Just a matter of, just passing the ordinance, we'll do it and then we'll capture it in the actual.
Okay, we don't have to have a capital budget for the year, even a placeholder, okay.
In the temporary budget, we inserted $3 million. So we have $3 million in 2015.
And Ostry, you had?
Bob, my question is, did you say we will also do Millan overlay projects in 2015?
Yes.
And?
That would be a totally separate appropriation.
Right. And are they reflected on this list here? No.
They are not reflected on this list that we just passed out. It's a separate schedule, Ostry.
Okay.
And it's, if you'd like us to mark up that PowerPoint and get it out to you, we could certainly do that.
Okay, thanks.
But that'll be part of the full capital budget.
Full capital budget, it's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Bob?
Yeah, I'm noticing that you're adding $500,000 to 2015, but you're moving much more than that over to '16. Is it necessary to, I think, you know, I don't have, I was going to add it up, but you're moving almost $700,000, $800,000 off to next year.
$630,000 is getting moved.
Is it possible to maybe get some of those other streets done this year as well?
It may be possible. I think, as the mayor stated, Ridge Dale Avenue is one component of our entire road program and it's very simple and easy to approve that separately.
All right.
And take the other roads into our regular budgetary discussion going into March or April.
Yeah, so we come back, we'll see the multi-year and what will be recommended for this year, which could change from what's on there right now.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All right, so that is ordinance two, which is listed for introduction. And then appropriating $200,000 in general capital for library. Bob, you're going to cover it?
I'll do the best I can. Many of the library board members are here as well. We took bids on a HVAC improvement project in the fall. The bid results were, even the entire spectrum were over the budgeted amount and over the amounts that were originally estimated by the design consultant, EI associates. We subsequently went back to, after rejecting the bids, went back to EI associates and asked them for the reasons for that. And there was a multifaceted set of reasons. But one of the biggest reasons was the ceiling and lighting projects were not included as they had intended to. And so the ceiling and lighting projects were the basis for us having to come back and request additional funds. These additional funds, and Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the library agrees to put off an anticipated budgetary expense in their five-year projected capital request from last year for the parking lot reconstruction because it's a much lower priority than the ceilings, lighting, and HVAC project, which is currently before them and we've been trying to get implemented for the past year. So along those lines, that's the nature of the request. And again, if there's any questions, either I or a member of the library board can answer.
So a quick synopsis again. One, the $450,000 that was appropriated, which I think the understanding of this council was, that was for HVAC work. We really didn't talk about the additional work related to ceiling and lighting that has to be done as this project goes through. So that number wasn't bad, it just didn't cover everything in there. So now this $200,000 is the amount to cover this related work, which was in the bid package that went out, but really was not under the understanding of this council at the time. Number two is, as you just stated, that this will, when we come back with the full capital budget conversations, this is the only one for the library for this year.
And they agree to put off the parking lot for the current set of requests for this year, correct?
Rob?
Thank you. So how did we miss the ceiling and lighting? My concern is not at all with, you know, pushing the parking lot off till next year. That has nothing to do with it. What my concern is, like, I know that if I, in my own home, with my own money, had someone come in and bid me a job and who was supposed to be an expert and missed this, and then I'm not sure I would trust that person's next bid or recommendation. So, you know, I have no issue with, you know, how people want to juxtapose or what needs to get spent. I just want to make sure, and right now, I'm not at all confident, that that number is a good number, because I would hate to see it morph from 650 to 900 because something else was left off. And when we hire a consultant and we pay good money for it, one would expect good data. You know what I'm saying?
Completely understand.
So how, I'm wondering, why do we make a decision to stick with the consultant?
Okay.
Number one, and number two, you know, so that's my concern, right? Not that we'll do the parking lot next year.
And that's a completely understandable reaction. I think we all had the same reaction at the bid opening. And the thought process was as follows, and the results of our subsequent investigation as to why that happened is as follows. The bidders had a very concise set of numbers, all dozen of them. They were all looking at a set of plans and specifications that fairly well defined the project. So the plans and specifications didn't really seem to be the issue. What seemed to be the issue was the estimates. And I think at this point, the consultant will fully admit, there was a component of those estimates that were not included despite being asked a couple of times. And so there was a definite communication problem with EI on the subject of the cost estimates for ceilings and lighting. That said, backing off the reaction for a second, if we want to get a different consultant involved, which obviously is an option, because our level of confidence in what they've done is low, that is a much larger obligation in time, could potentially put off the project for another year. And I think because the plans and specifications, the contractors understood at the time of the bid, I did not think that that was, nor did any part of the group, think that that was necessarily reason to suspect the consultant wasn't doing good work. What they didn't do good work on was the estimating and communicating those estimates to the borough. As you know, when we put our estimates together, they're based on a signed and sealed engineer's estimate for a project. The only signed and sealed estimate we got from EI after several requests was for a portion of the project. They didn't really give us any formal update on that to cover the ceilings and lighting. And that's the reason we took the route that we did.
And with this round, they have a very clear understanding what their budget they're working towards. And the results of the conversation related to value engineering to make sure they tweak the HVAC part of it so we may have more competitive bids.
And more than that, Rob, they agreed to make any changes in the plans and specifications and cost estimates at no cost to the borough moving forward.
Gee. Wow, yeah.
But we did waste a lot of time and money in the process, you're right.
Sport, yeah.
Bob?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand what happened. And, you know, I understand this work needs to get done, I wanted to get done, but how many people actually bid on this project?
There's a dozen bidders.
All right, and they all missed this work?
No, they all, they all bid, what was, the bid documents basically designed a $650,000 project. We funded a $450,000 project. So that was the.
I guess what I'm getting at is none of them picked up on the fact that the ceiling work would have to be done as well.
Oh, the bidders did.
I don't think the consultant did.
The consultants picked up on it because it was in the bid specifications, but it was never communicated to this council that.
After the bid.
Right.
Till after the bid.
Pat?
I mean, it just sounds like they gave us one set of specs and a number of $450,000 for a project. And then somewhere later on, the project got larger and they never communicated back to us that it had and that we should expect the cost to go up. Because what went out, obviously, with a dozen people bidding, they were all in the ballpark. They understood what they were bidding on. But I don't think when we authorized the money, we knew what was going to go out as a bid.
For me, it's not so much the money, it's per se, obviously, money is important, right? But it's such an important project and I believe we need to do it right the first time. Okay, I'm an engineer, went to Texas Instruments, that was it, do it right the first time. So I'm not sure, for me, it's a confidence thing on the, on the design that is now delivered. And I don't want, I don't, and I understand it might take more time, but I don't want to do a subpar job on such an important project. And I don't know, I mean, how, I mean, what kind of confidence?
My feeling is having sat down with it, they've got a handle on the, on the actual project. The design work is good, the budgeting work was poor.
Your estimate is that it would delay this for another year?
If we had a different consultant.
It would also add cost in that you're going to have to pay another consultant to do the work.
You can't do without an HVAC system during the summer.
And you can't do without an engineered set of plans and specifications to bid it. So we're a little bit stuck there.
Ben and then Pat?
Yeah, I may sound a little naive because I don't know this process at all. But are you saying that what happened here is they, the consultant came up with a perfectly good plan, which was then sealed and handed out for bidding purposes? But we were led to believe that the cost of that plan would come in at something substantially lower because of the lack of communication between the consultant and someone on our side? Is that?
Substantially lower, yes.
Okay. So we're not, we don't necessarily think his work is bad, we think his communication skills are bad. Is that what we're saying?
I think that's what we're taking away from this, Ben.
All right. Thank you.
Do we know how much we're spending currently to keep the current system running in its current state? That's another, that's another cost component. No, 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 I'm talking about the fact that it's old and it's got problems.
It should.
How much, how much more efficient do you expect it to be and how much is your annual electric cost?
Tom, if you could come up to the microphone, sorry. And for those watching at home, Tom was answering the cost, what is it, estimated additional cost of running a inefficient HVAC system. And if you could repeat that again and.
The expectation was that the current system is a very old, inefficient, parts are not available, they have to be built. And we've been running between 20 and 40, $50,000 over the last several years. And the expectation was that this was going to then drive that total cost down ultimately. So in any particular year, but on an average basis. The, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an architect. And I guess I would just only echo that, at least my take, walking away from the meeting with the consulting engineers, along with Mr. Vogel, with Mr. Van Rysen, who heads our buildings and grounds, who happens to be an architect engineer, that the plans that we have were good in terms of what we were looking for. There were some mechanical specifications, like the actual equipment, where they specifying, and I don't know, honeywell versus carrier versus, they had some. And the expectation based upon, I think, your work, going back to the bidders, you really know that you're asking for, you know, Mercedes and you could probably get by with X. And so again, that's part of this value engineering, the best that I can understand, going through in terms of. The $450,000 estimate that they originally used that we came in a year ago was almost strictly for what I call the mechanical aspect of the project. The rest of the design work and things of that nature on the ceiling and the X work that had to be done with respect to lighting wasn't finished until this past summer in '14. So it was like six months after the fact. And we never came back and asked them, or they never offered that this was going to change significantly. We should have been smart enough to figure it out.
No, no, I mean.
No, no, you hired a consultant, it was his job, not yours. There's no one at the library that is to blame for this at all, this, as far as I'm concerned.
Bob?
But one of the other things, I think, and Bob is just reminding me, you know, we've had several calls, like from the fire department to come because the things are smelling, this part isn't working, smoking. And so this past summer and this autumn, you know, they got very familiar with the roof and the equipment.
It's in very bad repair.
But Bob and then Pat?
I just have one final question. I mean, I get what happened. What I don't understand, or maybe if you can explain it to me, is why, if we were to send it off for rebid now, would it delay the project a year? Considering we have the plans, we have the bid specs, we have the list of bidders, why would it delay the project a year?
I understand, I understand.
A little bit, Bob. Operational from the library. The highest period of usage for the library are children's programs in the June to August period.
Right.
And this will require actually shutting the library down for everybody, they tell me four to six weeks. Why, I don't understand that, but I accept that. And so just to try to do that in that period, so we're really pushing it back to hopefully the September, October timeframe.
So what you're saying is the timing, pushing it back would really push it into a peak period?
Yes.
So doing it now gets it done before.
To get it out so we know exactly what the bidder, hopefully get a successful bidder, know when they want to start and what is exactly going to be the timeframe that it will be done.
And the second part of the magic of September is not just the, related to the library programming, but is to get off of the school summer HVAC work that would be done because we would be competing against that and would drive up costs.
Pat?
Yeah, in terms of the. Um, yeah, in terms of the additional $200,000 of work, was any of that anticipated in the five-year capital budget that was presented last year? In other words, is that going to eliminate anything down the road?
Just the part, with respect to the HVAC project, no. The 450 was the number that we used in the five-year plan. The expectation in the 2015 go-around includes other items.
No, no, I understood that, but when, it sounds like there was more work that was going to get done as part of this project than was initially anticipated. So, I was thinking possibly some of it was going to be done two, three, four years down the road, and was already in our kind of long-range capital budgeting.
No, no.
No, okay. And then the other question is, I still have the schedule of asbestos abatement, is there any asbestos abatement that's done as part of this project?
We actually did the asbestos abatement in the spring last year. We closed the library for a two- to three-week period, and that we used from some additional work that had been appropriated for HVAC work, and we just said, okay, we can get it done. Gary negotiated with an eight, an asbestos abatement guy, so he got it under the bid limit, and we were able to get it done quick, and with the money that had been previously appropriated, so it worked out, and we kept on saying, well, they're going to be here in the fall. Never made it.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Again, I don't think anybody at the library is to blame for this. When you hire a consultant, you expect communication and proper plans, so Tom apologized, he didn't need to, okay?
All right, thank you, thank you, Rob. So, this is ordinance three, which is listed for introduction. All right, there are no ordinances for hearing, since this is our first regular meeting. And now, we're on to our second invitation for discussion. This is when you may comment on anything you want. Please step up to lecterns, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to be heard? Lisa, or, pardon, and Lisa will follow you.
Tom Bittinger, Rolling Hill Court. I can't let this opportunity pass by. The work that the utility committee did, based on our analysis, really deserve a significant compliment in terms of driving the analysis, and we really look forward to working with them to help drive an overall answer. We're going to be interested in what the capital people do, because, as you recall, we kind of left a holding place. We dropped some things in there, and I think we'll get a better understanding as to what we think should be dropping in.
Thank you, Tom. Lisa?
Lisa Ellis, 46 Britton Street. I'm just here to do a little plug for the upcoming, beginning kickoff meeting of the Board of Education Strategic Planning. It's, if you've probably seen it in the press, we're billing it as the community cafe, but it's really like an open invitation for members of the community, members of the council, everybody to come in an informal setting and share your views about where we are as a school district. The more people that participate, the wider range of opinions, the better the outcome of our strategic planning. So, February 3rd, there's three sessions, 9:00 to 11:00, 4:00 to 6:00, and 7:00 to 9:00. RSVP requirement. With your permission, I'm going to leave these over on the table for you to pick up, and it's also noted on the district website, and it's been in the press. So, that's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you, that should be a great project. I received my call and ready to step forward. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the agenda, and we move on to introduction of ordinances. Borough Clerk, please read the statement.
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for January the 26th, 2015. All will be published in the Madison Eagle Post on the bulletin board and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance one, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending and supplementing certain affordable housing provisions of Chapter 195 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Land Development Ordinance.
Mayor, I move ordinance one dash 2015.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I will be voting yes on the introduction of the ordinance, but I, for transparency's sake, I reserve the right to change it. I want to seek out a few developers just to get their view on it as well, but I, in general, it seemed like a good idea, and so I will be voting yes.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance two dash 2015.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $950,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for road improvements on Ridgedale Ave.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance two dash 2015.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance three dash 2015.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $200,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund to supplement ordinance twenty-three, 2014, which appropriated $450,000 for replacement of the HVAC system and miscellaneous repairs and improvements at the Madison Public Library.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance three dash 2015.
I second.
Any further discussion? Yes, Rob?
If it were my own home, I wouldn't do it. However, I mean, considering there's potential safety issues, based on what the engineer has told us, and my trust that the engineer will steward this to a successful completion, I'll vote yes, but I think going forward, we need to demand much more from our consultants, and we need to potentially rework our contract, so if something like this happens again, there's some consequence.
Yep.
That's all I have to say.
Good point, thank you. Any other comments? Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions, will the Clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions are 29 through R42 and R44 to R47.
I second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business, approval of vouchers.
Public safety, $46,332.24. Health and public assistance, $2,913.26. Public works and engineering, $263,202.9. Community affairs, $4,678.20. Finance and Borough Clerk, $3,098,485.11. And utilities, $599,334.32. The total is $4,004,945.22.
For the vouchers?
Second.
Second.
Discussion, roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Under new business, like to make the following appointments and request council confirmation. For the Audit Committee, Tom Bittinger, 20 Rolling Hills Court, for three-year term through December 31st, 2017. Arthur Powell, 44 Garfield Ave., two-year term through December 31st, 2016. Michael Soriano, Woodland Road, one-year term through December 31st, 2015. And Bob Landrigan, the Finance Chairperson. Recreation Advisor Committee, Dave Carver, 29 Bellew Ave., one-year term through December 31st, 2015. Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, Bill List, as our income tax prep of 26 Rose Ave., one-year term through December 31st, 2015. Susan Shealy as YIMSA Rep., for one-year term through December 31st, 2015. And for the Downtown Development Commission, Susan Whitehorn of 12 Witten Road, for the unexpired three-year term through December 31st, 2015.
I'll move them.
I'll second.
Discussion, roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, move adjourn.
They still waiting at?
317.
The Ohio State's.
Four minutes left in the game?
That's what I would think of, somebody's seniority. It does that kind of work.
Kind of where he can't score.